You don't have your glasses?
This session is called to order. Everybody is requested to rise for the singing of the national anthem. Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer to be led by Honorable Ria Vergara, please.
We pray for the eternal repose of our colleague, the Honorable Sirako Kalalang of Cabayan Partilis. May perpetual light shine upon him, eternal rest granted unto him, O Lord, and perpetual light shine upon him, may his soul rest in peace. We also pray for our budget deliberations to resume in an orderly, efficient, and timely manner guided by the Holy Spirit. This we humbly pray for, amen.
Amen. Amen. Majority Leader.
I defer, I'm sorry. Madam Chair, Speaker, I move that we defer with the calling of the role.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is carried.
Madam Speaker, I also move for to defer the reading and approval of the previous journal.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as the communications and committee reports.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, motion is approved. The Secretary General is ordered to read the... Reference of Business.
Reference of Business, Bills on First Reading, House Bill 8270, granting a franchise to the Mount Apo Multimedia Advertising Corporation, Representative Katamco.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 8271, recognizing January 26th every year's servants of the Enterprise of the First Quarter Stormed Representatives Elago, Tino, and several others.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Numbers 8272 and 8273, establishing a junior high school in the different barangays sent by by later, Representative Kari.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 8274, Amending Republic Act 10868, Representative Calixto Rubiano.
To the Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 8275, Amending Republic Act 7277, Representative Calixto Rubiano.
To the Committee on Social Services.
Resolution, House Resolution 2190, calling to investigate by the appropriate committee the right of first refusal, Representative Suarez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 2191, condemning in the strongest possible terms the latest incidents of explosion in front of Munita lying in Purok Malipayon barangay Apopong along the National Highway in General San Jose City, Representative Bataron.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 2192, requesting the Committee on Information and Communications Technology to inquire on the status of operations of Smart Communications Inc., Sun Cellular, and Globe Telecom's construction of cell towers in their respective areas of jurisdiction, Representative Salimbango, Panjung, several others.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communication letters dated 18 September 2018 of Jose R. Fahardo, Director and Head, LAIG.
To the Committee on Banks and Intermediaries. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, under the calendar of unfinished business, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill Number 8169, submitted by the Committee on Appropriations, and for this purpose, may I ask that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill, so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 816... Nine.
House Bill 8169, An Act Appropriating Funds for the Operation of the Government of the Republic of the Philippines from January 1 to December 31, 2019, and for other purposes.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move the parliamentary status of the bill is that it is in the period of sponsorship and debate. Madam Speaker, I move that we proceed with the period of interpolation on the budget of the judiciary, so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from Cebu, the Honorable Raoul Del Mar, to answer questions, if any, on the budget of the judiciary, so move, Madam Speaker.
The Honorable Del Mar is recognized.
Madam Speaker, let me just, uh... For a while, dwell on... The, uh... Total budget proposal, or maybe, a total budget proposed is, uh... Thirty-six billion, 267,724,000, and, uh... Uh... May I say directly that this was slashed to, uh, by... By the, uh... DBM, and the National Expenditure Program is now only...
Thirty-seven point three billion.
Thirty-seven point, uh... Three billion. And we are, uh, ready to answer, uh, questions, uh, from our colleagues.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, before we recognize the members who will interpolate the sponsor, the honorable sponsor, may we first acknowledge the presence in the plenary of, uh, the members of the judiciary, namely Associate Supreme Court Associate Justice Justado Peralta, Retired Justice Jose Mendoza, the chairperson of the Judicial and Bar Council, Chancellor Adolfo S. Acuna of the Philippine Judicial Academy, Court Administrator Jose Maidas Marquez, Deputy Court Administrator Raoul Villanueva, Court of Appeals Presiding Justice Romeo Barza, Associate Justice Danton... Busen, Associate Justice Rafael Antonio Santos, Sandigan Bayan Presiding Justice Amparo Kabutahetang, Justice Alex Quiros, Justice Geraldine Faith Ekong, and the Court of Tax Appeals Justice Juanito Castaneda Jr.
To the honorable justices, welcome to the House of Congress. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend proceedings for a few minutes.
Session suspended for a few minutes. The session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we recognize the first, uh, member of the House who will interpolate, the sponsor, Representative Anthony Bravo of Partilis Coop Natco.
The Honorable Bravo is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Majority Leader. Good morning to everyone. We'll distinguish sponsor, yield to some question from this representation.
Yes, certainly, to, uh...
Thank you, Your Honor.
My colleague.
So the budget of the judiciary is reflected in its proposal, National Expenditure Program 2019. Correct me if I am wrong, is 32,528,744. Is that correct?
No, the, the entire budget, net, for the just judiciary is 37.330 billion. Uh... And this is, uh... This was slashed by, uh... This is a slash of 18.599 billion, which represents 33% of its proposal, amounting to 55.99 billion.
Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, for us to be discussing apple to apple, may I request suspension for one minute and confer our data.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for a suspension of the session for one minute.
Suspense, suspension. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Chair, may we resume the, uh... Madam Speaker, may we resume the interpolation of the Honorable Congressman Anthony Bravo of Coop Natco.
The Honorable Bravo is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. May I proceed with my, uh, interpolation, uh... Our data now, Jives, as far as 2018 and 2019. But may I go back, uh, on 2016? I've seen for myself that the budget in 2016, as far as appropriation and obligation of the judiciary, was, uh... The available appropriation at the time, 2016, was 33,189,777. Will you confer?
We, I'm afraid, Your Honor, Madam Speaker, that maybe it's thereabouts, but we have no figure here, uh, ready to, uh, be able to answer that because this has been, uh... This, your question dwells on the year 2016, but we will, um, provide you, I honor, uh, Madam Speaker, with, uh, the necessary information.
Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, Your Honor, while we are discussing the 2019 budget, it is one of our duties to see for ourselves or look into what how the agency or the institution utilize the budget, the prior year's budget. That's why I'm raising this, uh, issue. So, I, I... This is a, a budget that will be defended by the judiciary, so I'm pretty well there aware of the procedure of, uh, budget scrutiny. That's why we are not just discussing 2018 or 2019. So let me, uh, be, be that as may, um, let me call your attention on the appropriation obligation because this is a part of the report, in fact. It's not my, my data, it is taken from the report on the net. Okay, so while the new appropriation in 2016 was 26 billion, the available appropriation then was 33 billion, a difference of almost 7 billion, and you had a continuing appropriation of 4.5 billion. At the end of the year, December 31, 2016, the judiciary has a total obligation of 31 billion. Simply put, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, Your Honor, the agency has a new appropriation of 2 billion. And of that 2.079 billion, 2.035 was released to the agency, but remained unobligated. It remains an obligated allotment. Lucky enough, in 2016, it was a carryover budget in 2017. It became a continuing appropriation. However, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, out of 2.35 billion, the continuing appropriation was only 1.681 in 2017. What then happened to the difference? And that's about 400 million.
Uh, the, the Speaker, Your Honor, uh, the Supreme Court looks into, uh, the, uh... Any obligated amount and... And these are earmarked for other programs and liabilities. That is pursuant, of course, to a resolution.
Yeah, because, uh, per our constitutional provision, the judiciary has that authority or power to make use of its savings if there was any.
That's right, Your Honor.
In 2017, Your Honor, the new appropriation, please confirm, was 31,851,121,000. That was 2017. And the agency has a continuing appropriation of 1.681 billion. The total available appropriation then, while the new appropriation was 31,000 appropriated by Congress in 2017, the available appropriation was 34 billion, more than 3 billion. And after, uh, up, uh, the, of the 34 billion, again, you were able to obligate only 32.9 billion, leaving again, an obligated allotment of 1.3 billion or a new appropriation of 1.8 billion, almost the same on 2016.
Yes.
Now comes 2018, Your Honor.
Your figures are, uh, of course, uh, um... Near as much to, uh, the actual records, if not actually the same amount. And these, uh, unobligated, uh, amounts are, are, uh... Looked into by the Supreme Court and correspondingly, um... Program for the expenses that, uh, they decide.
Thank you for that, yeah, Your Honor, Madam Speaker. If in 2016, the budget, any excess thereto, will be carried over in the succeeding year as continuing appropriation because the validity at the time was two years validity, two-year validity. But in 2017, it's a different picture because the validity is only one year. So if you have a new appropriation of 1.8 billion in 2017, my question is, is the judiciary covered by that restriction on validity wherein in 2017, it's only one-year validity?
Um, Your Honor, uh, the Speaker, I, uh... I guess not because, uh, of its fiscal autonomy.
Are you certain, Your Honor? Are you certain, Your Honor, that, uh, in terms of validity, you are not covered by one-year validity because of that fiscal autonomy?
Yes, uh, uh, that's correct, it's certain, and, uh... And because, again, of what I said, the fiscal autonomy of the, the courts, and there, there are... the fiscal autonomy of the, the courts, and there, there are so at the, end of the year, they are covered by resolutions earmarking them for uh specific projects and activities.
I will leave it that way, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor. Comes 2018. In 2018, you had an appropriation of 35 billion 354 million.
That's correct, your honor, Madam Speaker.
As far as utilization of the fund, as of uh August 30, what's the rate of your utilization?
Is, your honor, of course, is uh referring to the reasons for the underspending by the judiciary of its current or 2018 budget absorbed by NIBM?
Yes, your honor.
Yes. Well, based on records, uh, uh, the current budgets of uh, of the PET, CA and Sanggune Ambay and CTA are being spent within allowable levels, and there is no significant underspending on their part. With respect to the Supreme Court and lower courts, the personal budget are being spent in accordance with the programs as approved in the 2018 GA. As to its capital outlay budget, the same is project-specific and involve major ticket items, the procurement of which are being processed by the different committees and offices. And to add to that, your, your honor, Madam Speaker, it is only in the MOOE budget of the Supreme Court and the lower courts that there may be some significant underspending. However, this is explained by the fact that there are programs that have certain prerequisites, like the availability um of the halls of justice for repair or rehabilitation. Also, there are some projects or purchases that have to be done in bulk. So the requirements of the different courts have to be collated first before making proceeding with the procurement. And in addition, the direct release of the MOO to the lower courts is undergoing pilot testing based on the recent interim guidelines approved by the Supreme Court. Hence, the spending of this MOO budget will be accelerated once the MOO are released directly to all the lower courts nationwide, and not just to a selected, the few selected courts for pilot testing in the first semester of 2018.
As far as the total budget that was approved by Congress for 2018 for the agency, in terms of percentage, percentage of utilization rate for 2018?
We, we, all the courts, you would like uh, or just?
Just a total utilization rate, is it 50%?
For the judiciary?
As of, as of August or June, what's your data?
As of June 30, the amount is uh, the percentage is 60%.
60%. So it appears that uh you are hitting the target as far as utilization of the fund. Because that will be my next question.
That's right, your honor.
Every year, you have a new appropriation. Then 2018, you had an increase of uh more than 3 billion. And now you are asking for another increase, amounting to how much?
1.8 billion, your honor.
Uh, 1.8 billion, because I'm, I'm
Or exactly, um, comparing the budget of the judiciary per the 2018 GA um and the 2019 NEP is an one increase of 1.976 billion or 6% increase, to, to clarify.
Yeah, um, maybe the, the amount in terms of percentage is small, but an absolute figure, 1.9 is big. And uh, it cannot be denied that for every year, you have a new appropriation, meaning you cannot even fully utilize your fund, but here comes again, you're asking for another increase. But taking from the word of uh, the, your honor, Madam Speaker, that as of June 30, you in fact utilized already 60% of the budget for 2018. And uh, can you assure this representation that uh the utilization of, of the fund will be maximized, if not 100%, at least 25%? At the end of 2018?
Yes, your honor, Madam Speaker.
Which warrant the increase that you are asking now?
Yes, uh, that is right.
Um, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, I have no other issues to raise on the judiciary, except on one of its uh agency, which is the Court of Appeals.
Yes.
There are, there are issues that reach this body, in fact, uh, the minority and the institution, which to my mind, may compromise the independence of the judiciary, as far as Court of Appeals is concerned.
Yes, your honor, if we will continue with specifics, if you desire to.
Okay, so since uh, your honor, you want the specifics, this concerns about the Presiding Justice of the Court of Appeals. One issue that was raised.
Yes, the Presiding Officer himself.
Number one.
Romeo Barza, Justice Romeo Barza.
He appointed an Assistant Division Clerk of Court as Chief of the Property Division, even though she's not qualified. She lack the fiber experience. So an issue of reloading the process is being raised. Is this correct report? Your honor, Madam Speaker?
If uh, uh, it went through the process uh of the selection board, then uh, uh, that would be um, this, uh, alright, that would be, well, she would
Because, your honor
But since you raised it, your honor, we'll look into it more closely to see if all the processes have been complied with. But uh, on the surface, if it is, if it goes through the selection board, it uh, it assumed that all requirements have been met. But uh, uh, we uh would like to have your uh information, your honor, uh, Madam Speaker, to, to confirm this and refer it to the Presiding uh Justice.
I would like to put forward, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, that this information, we don't want to intervene the internal affairs of the judiciary, having that equal body. But as I've said, uh, to our mind, uh, these issues might compromise the independence of judiciary. Because the second issue is more, uh, requires more attention. Uh, as said, on August 2, 2018, uh, the Presiding Justice celebrated his birthday in the morning, and he made use of the dirty kitchen truck. It is obvious that uh seems to show influential. Is he not compromising the independence of judiciary by this way, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor?
Yes.
We are all aware that uh, the dirty kitchen is standard for least privilege.
This, this matter, uh, your honor, you will recall, was already taken up during the budget hearings uh, uh, before the committee. And uh, this has been uh properly responded to uh by the Presiding Justice himself before the committee.
Majority, your leader.
The Deputy Speaker, Picha, is motioning uh that he wants uh, uh, a suspension for a while, but I was responding him also through signals as he addressed the signals to me that maybe he can do it himself. Uh, he's beside the microphone there.
Madam Speaker?
Madam Speaker?
Motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend.
But uh, but this being brought up by the
But this being brought up, my brother, a lot of the issue with the setting just this.
It does not concern the budget. There is no relation to the budget, yeah? So, last one question that does not concern the budget. We only have your questions.
I don't know what's up.
As soon as you have.
Since this.
Uh, this is a suspended consideration on the budget activity. It's a case of objection, Jerry, it's a motion to support. Majority Leader, it is a case of consideration, I'll speak in a light. It's a case of objection, Jerry, it's a dispute of support, it's majority Leader. It's a move that we take out in the speech and then put it forward. As a matter of fact, how speeches can be applied?
It's not concerned the budget, is it, Gutián? That they go, did you ask me about my live life? I will not answer you.
Yo, yo, Antinist. Nandito yun. Antinist. It's a year.
Hmm.
It takes the queue from the majority leader.
So it's a year.
The majority is not the one that are dealing with. Oh, I'm fine, I'm fine. When you have a majority like that, you need to know.
I don't know, yeah.
You're suspended considering consideration in judiciary.
Oo.
Tapos, baka lumipat tayo, ma'am, sa civic service.
Ah, as you told me, oh, yun si ano. Telepathically, link here, sa civic service.
Ma'am, the civic service is valid.
Oo. So, hindi na naman ito.
Hindi na lang kung ano.
Hmm hmm.
I mean, as we know.
Oo.
I mean, iba-iba si.
Any other matter, uh, to consider the citizens? Maybe the community, uh, present in the budget, but six to me, it's a.
Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker.
Session is resumed.
Madam Speaker, may we again recognize the honorable Anthony Bravo to continue his interpretation, Madam Speaker.
The honorable Bravo is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Distinguished sponsor, just one question. Um, speaking of independence integrity, is a member of Justice allowed to become an officer of Homeowners Association? Like member of the board? Because most of the time, they are dealing with, you know, there are some issues being raised, government employees are also member, and Justice seems to threaten some officers of the homeowners. That's why I am raising this issue.
Uh, yes, Your Honor, Madam Speaker. Uh, he's not prohibited from being a member, but of course, in issues that will compromise the position of the court and his position himself, then of course, he knows the justice concern. We know how to avoid that, Your Honor.
Not just a member, Your Honor, Madam Speaker, but an officer, member of the board for that matter.
That's right, Your Honor, Madam Speaker. Uh, they are allowed for so long as they do not compromise their position.
Thank you for that, Madam Speaker.
Now, going back, going back first to the.
Yeah.
Uh.
Can I get a commitment?
Matter, yeah. Uh, as we would like to reiterate to Your Honor and Your Honor, that this matter has already been brought up and discussed during the budget briefing. And despite that, because obviously, Your Honor, Madam Speaker, has more information to take up, then we assure him that we are referring that already now to the Senior Justice Peralta here. And that is very timely because not will, not only will he discuss it in bank, but there's an impact hearing tomorrow. So, you can be assured, Your Honor, that this matter will be brought to the fore by Senior Justice Peralta.
Will it carry the issue I raise, a justice being an officer of a Homeowners Association, which now in quarrel, you know? So, which to my mind might compromise? The independence of such a position.
Yes, Your Honor, Madam Speaker, if it is brought to the attention of the court.
Uh, that's why, Mr.
The court can dissuade the justice concern to, to, to involve himself in anything that will compromise his position on any issue that may be taken up in the Board of the Homeowners Association.
Actually, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, Your Honor, this is now the issue I am raising now, so that it will become component of the discussion. And I would like to seek commitment from Your Honor that these issues will be, will form part of the discussion of the judiciary.
Yes, Your Honor, Madam Speaker, is the word of the sponsor is also the word of the judiciary.
Thank you for that commitment, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor. I raise my case.
Thank you, Your Honor, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize Congressman Cesar Sarmiento of the Lone District of Catanduanes for his interpretation.
Congressman Sarmiento of Catanduanes is now recognized.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the recognition, Madam Speaker. Magandang umaga po sa ating lahat, sa ating disita, sa Supreme Court and other courts. Eh, simple lang po ang aking katanungan, kasi medyo may mga pangyayari sa aming lugar na nagbigay ng bagabang sa isipan lang marami. Could you please educate us the wisdom of the speedy trial act in relation to plea bargaining?
The speedy trial act with respect to plea bargaining. Na muna po, uh, under the continuous trial guideline, our judges are required to observe the speedy trial.
Um, under the continuous trial act, Your Honor, Madam Speaker. The judges are required to observe the speedy resolution of the case at all times. And that includes plea bargaining, which also is covered by the proper guideline that they observe.
So, in short, it is embedded actually in Republic Act 10951, which was passed by this Congress, which aims to, to resolve the case at the soonest possible time. Kaya nga speedy trial. So, in other words, plea bargaining is resorted to in order to resolve the case with dispatch.
Yes, Your Honor, Madam Speaker. They are complying with the 180 days rule.
I understand, this is.
As provided, as provided in the, in the, in the speedy trial act.
I understand that Justice Isadore Peralta is the brainchild of this particular initiative to declutter the number of cases in all courts in the Philippines.
Yes, Your Honor, Madam Speaker. Uh, Senior Justice Peralta is the brainchild of the continuous trial guideline. And he's here beside the sponsor, Sandy, and listening to you. And he will not let anything go wrong with the act since he is the brainchild and a main proponent of this program.
So, the main objective of which is to speed up trial, but not at the expense of Justice. The Justice must be dispensed with properly.
Of course, Your Honor, of course, Your Honor, that goes without saying.
Now, laying down the predicate, in our province, in the province of Catanduanes, particularly illegal lugging cases. Ang nangyayari po ganito, may nahuhuli pong mga illegal lugging cases. Ang nangyayari po, patatawagin, siyempre nahuli 'yung driver at pahinante. Now, ang gagawin invoking the speedy trial and plea bargaining, ang gagawin nung driver to consider voluntary surrender and plea of guilt, that the offenders would now qualify because of the penalty would qualify for probation. And then they are released. So, ganun po ang nangyayari. Kung one or two or three cases, eh walang problema po yun. But it has already reached more than 30 cases. Na ang ginagawa po, 'yung driver, nagbo-voluntary surrender at nagplea of guilt para maka avail po ng probation. Now, Madam Speaker, ang situation po nito is ganito. Ang mga driver o ang pahinante will not go sa isang lugar, sa malayong lugar at 10 oras ng gabi. Kung hindi po sila uutusan, so may nag-uutos po sa kanila para kumuha ng kahoy. Now, siyempre nahuli po 'yung mga sasakyan. And during the investigation, and dumating po sa trial, 'yung may-ari po ng sasakyan ay hindi po nasasama. Ang lagi pong nakakasuhan 'yung driver at pahinante. Can we do something about this, Your Honor? Because as I said, aside from speedy disposition of cases, but Justice is served properly.
Yes, Your Honor, Madam Speaker, the preparation of the information is within the purview of the prosecution service. And so, with respect to deciding on the plea bargaining, that is a exercise of judiciary discretion. But if there will be an error, Your Honor, he can be brought to the office of the city court administrator.
While it is true, it's correct, it has been said. Na sa investigation level, sa prosecution, dapat nasama na po 'yung may-ari ng sasakyan. But almost always, pag may kaso, ganun na ganun na lang. And I think it would be, I hope my observation is correct, proper for the judge to point out also. proper for the judge to point out also the inadequacy on the part of the prosecution by not including the owner of the vehicle.
Yes, that is correct, Your Honor. But the judge cannot really be interested in the prosecution because he would appear to be biased on this issue, Your Honor.
Well, ideally, ideally, if I were the judge noting the inadequacy and you could upon evaluation of the case, the people behind ordering these lowly people to go to a very far place just to fetch the illegally cut lumber would catch my attention and remind the prosecution that henceforth in the investigation of illegal lugging cases, they should see to it that owners of the vehicle which is used to transport the illegal cut lumber must also be implied or included.
Yes, Your Honor, Madam Speaker. That is really within the ambit of the prosecution. And so even in the plea bargaining stage, if the justice or the judge concerned should, can ask the prosecution to submit additional grounds to determine probable cause. And then beyond that, he cannot anymore... He has to avoid any activity or more involvement to avoid impartiality of the judge.
Your Honor, na kung sa may pagkakataon na ganito at medyo nakaligtaan 'yung may-ari ng sasakyan, eh call ng attention po ng hukom. 'Yung pangyayari 'yan para maibigay 'yung tamang hustisya. Eh napag utusan lang po 'yung driver and pahinante. Sila po ang nabigyan ng penalty, pero 'yung naputo sa kanila ay scot-free. In order to prevent the recurrence and in order to serve as a deterrent to the commission, further commission of illegal lugging cases, I think it would be proper to include the owner of the vehicle.
We agree, Your Honor, Madam Speaker. But the prosecution has always, always gets the first crack. And the judge can see to it that more grounds are submitted and to really be able to determine probable cause. So the judge has to stay impartial because he will be resolving the case. And he cannot be involved in the prosecution and matters pertaining to the prosecution because he will be the one to resolve that. So I guess he can ask for additional grounds. But beyond that, he has to be careful not to appear as impartial because he will be deciding the case.
And pwede bang malaman kung may way of monitoring ang Supreme Court sa mga decision na ginawa ng lower court? Halimbawa po sa more than 30 cases, ang nahahatulan lang 'yung driver, pahinante? Kasi kung if the proper office in the Supreme Court would be able to scrutinize these cases, you will arrive at a conclusion that there is some defect. Because as I said, the main purpose of deciding a case is to deliver justice properly.
Yes, Your Honor. After judicial audit, then the judge can be taken to task to at least justify the actions taken.
Kasi sa pangyayari ito, wala namang motion for reconsideration or appeal. Kaya it will not reach the level of the Supreme Court. Pero pinapabot ko lang po 'yung pangyayari po sa aming lugar para baka makatulong po sa inyo. And then pang alawa, napakaikli lang po.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, for that. And let the judicial audit take care of the other circumstances which will involve a dissolution by the impartial judge.
Yeah, thank you very much. Last, napakaiksi lang po nito. Sa Catanduanes po, may dalawang sala. So dalawang judge used to be. I think it's more than, I'm not so sure, but more than five years or almost 10 years na hindi yata nagkaroon ng professional jealousy 'yung dalawang judge. 'Yung isa judge ay umalis, may naiwan. So bakante 'yung sala for quite a long time. And I think hindi ho ba alam ito ng ating Supreme Court na may mga bakanting sala ng matagal na? And marami namang nag-aapply na maging judge.
Yes, Your Honor, Madam Speaker. They are looking for an acting judge to fill the vacancy. You're right, Your Honor. The two judges had differences that needed action like what was done. That one was transferred to Metro Manila and so that vacancy now exists because of the circumstance. And they will certainly appoint somebody permanent as soon as they can.
So anyway po, to end my interpellation, magkiusap po ako sa ating mga kaibigan sa Supreme Court na kung po pwede po punuan na po 'yung bakante sa sala, bakanting sala sa aming probinsya. Pwede ho bang makuha ang commitment po ng Supreme Court?
Yes, of course. Said the Senior Justice Peralta. Maybe you overheard him. Why, you're not too far away. Confirming, confirming that.
Okay, thank you very much. That ends my interpellation.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize Congressman Mark Go of the Lone District of Baguio City for his interpellation.
Honorable Mark Go is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Mister Sponsor, magandang umaga po at member ng committee. Tiningnan ko po ang current authorized positions of the Supreme Court and the whole judiciary. And based on record, the approved authorized positions are 37,514. Tama po ba 'yan?
Yes, about 38,557.
Okay. On record also, there are 13,002 unfilled positions.
Based on official records, it's less than that. Because there is a continuing processing of vacancies.
So ilan po as of today, ilan ang unfilled positions of the Supreme Court and the other courts total?
You're looking at the records, Your Honor? About 9,000, Your Honor, Madam Speaker. More or less?
9,000. Medyo malip po yon based on the data that we got.
Yes, maybe the difference, Your Honor, is that can be answered that there is a continuing processing of vacancies.
Based on record, since 2015, unfilled positions, 2015, 2016, 2017. And as of today, the average unfilled position for the last four years is more than 12,000. In 2017, the unfilled position is 12,848. And today, if you look at the number, it's about 13,000 unfilled positions.
Yes, there is a continuing process of filling this up. They even meet every Monday for this purpose, Your Honor.
You think you can fill this up in the next 12 months, Madam Speaker?
There are positions that can be filled within the year. But rest assured that those which were not will be done in the next following year.
Okay. One of the reasons why I asked that question is because if I look at the performance indicators of the various bodies in the courts, in the judiciary, if I look at the Supreme Court, for example, the total number of cases that were resolved, it's about 5,621. The regional trial courts, about 229,627. The metropolitan trial courts, 73,000. Municipal trial courts in cities, 83,000. The municipal circuit trial courts, 25,000. The municipal trial courts, 27,000. The child and family courts, 37,000. And on the same record, if you look at the disposition rate, stated here, the Supreme Court, 39%, the RTC is 26%, the metro trial courts, 60%, the municipal trial court in the cities, 56%. Then if you look at down the line, medyo mababa po. And probably this can be attributed to the unfilled positions. In other words, cases are resolved longer. That's why the disposition cases medyo mababa ang rate. Ito po ba dahil sa kulang ang mga judges natin sa iba't ibang korte? Kaya po medyo mababa ang disposition rate natin.
Yes, Your Honor. If you use as basis disposition rate, it will be what exactly you said. But the clearance rate is one used and it will be 86% for 2017, Your Honor. And accomplishment rate will even be higher at 97% for the Supreme Court alone.
Okay. Ito pong agency budget notes natin na pinagaralan ito pong pagsusuri tungkol sa disposition ng mga cases. So naniniwala po kayo by next year because of the filling up of these positions, eh mag-iimprove 'yung rate natin from an average of more than 50%. Probably umabot ng 50% or 90%.
The disposition rate can never reach 100%, Your Honor, because you dispose not only of the current cases but of the old cases combined.
Yes. So hindi naman po. I'm not expecting that this should be even 90%. Mga 70%, medyo mataas na po 'yan or 80%.
Yes, it will be higher, Your Honor, with the positions filled.
Okay. 'Yung pong karanasan namang namin sa Baguio, I would like to state this. Republic Act 10696, which was signed into law last November 11, 2015, creating two RTCs and two MTCs in the city of Baguio. And I understand that the Supreme Court is committed in implementing these two RTCs and two MTCs in the city of Baguio. But apparently, the budget has not been approved yet in organizing these four courts in the city of Baguio. Alam po ninyo, 'yung disposition ng cases hindi lamang siguro sa Baguio, kundi sa buong Pilipinas, eh medyo mababa dahil kulang ang ating mga korte dun po sa amin at sa ibang parte ng Pilipinas. So kung pwede po sana, isama natin ito sa budget. At kung pwede, implement natin as soon as possible kasi apat na taon na po ito.
Yes, Your Honor, Madam Speaker. They have been asking for additional budget and your concern with the courts are embodied there. So in a while, we will be presenting the additional budget they need and it is incorporated there for the courts of Baguio.
Madam Chair, if you're recommending that we add this budget, I would like to express my support to the additional budget so that all these courts that have been pending their creation should be created as soon as possible by approving the budget as proposed by the Supreme Court or by the judiciary.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
And you know, we are not really asking the restoration of the entire 18 billion. We have in mind only 7 billion, which covers your concern, Your Honor.
Thank you. Supportan po natin 'yung additional 7 billion for the judiciary. Malamay po salamat at magandang umaga po.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, for your support. And we will be presenting this briefly in a while when questions are through.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Congressman Vicente Veloso of the 3rd District of Leyte for his interpellation.
The Honorable Veloso is now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Will the distinguished sponsor yield to few questions or better still, manifestation to appropriate the interpretation of this representation?
Yes, certainly to my close friend and relative, Honorable Veloso.
Madam Speaker, I have a copy of the letter dated September 17, 2018 of the Honorable Romeo Barza, Presiding Justice of the Court of Appeals, addressed to the Honorable Carlo Nogales, Chairman of the Committee on Appropriations, covering three points. One, as a predicate, Madam Speaker, the Court of Appeals purchased a property at Global City. And there is a need for them to put up already a building. And they proposed an amount of 1.455 billion as capital outlay for fiscal year 2019. However, the DBM gave them only 10 million. What use is 10 million, Madam Speaker? I therefore would request the honorable sponsor again to appropriate my interpellation that he joins me in restoring this amount in order that the Court of Appeals can be well placed at Global City.
Yes, again, Your Honor, Madam Speaker. We are asking reconsideration for the amount as earlier mentioned. And similarly, your concern is addressed in that additional appropriation request which we shall be making to the amount of 7 billion. which we shall be making to the amount of 7 billion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The second point, Madam Speaker. Because of inflation, prices of commodities, including supplies, traveling, et cetera, have increased. These soaring prices brought about the request of the Court of Appeals for an additional maintenance and other operating expenses an increase by 87,602,000. Again, dictated by the soaring prices of supplies and materials and other services such as traveling, training, and scholarship, utility expenses, communication expenses, professional services, general services, repairs, maintenance expenses, and other economic factors. This has been slashed from the proposed budget of the judiciary, and may I request the distinguished sponsor that he joins me in restoring this slashed item to the General Appropriations Act for the year 2019.
We certainly welcome that support, Your Honor, the speaker. And if I may, now at this point, just bring up the answer to many problems that our colleagues are bringing up. That we are requesting an addition of 7 billion as the additional budget, which is broken down into Supreme Court and lower courts, 4.526 billion. The Presidential Electoral Tribunal of 3.3 million. CA, 1.634 billion. And Sandiganbyan, which is 843.29 million. So, this capital outlay total includes your concern that you brought up for the Court of Appeals.
Madam Speaker, thank you for that. As added details, the Court of Appeals requested a budget for capital outlays under machinery and equipment outlay, furnitures, and book outlays in the amount of 79 million for the continuous operation of the court. This was also slashed from the proposed budget submitted by the Office of the President. Will the honorable distinguished sponsor, Madam Speaker, join this representation in restoring this slashed item?
Yes, certainly, Your Honor. It is already included in the additional budget for CA, which is 1.634 billion, which I stated earlier.
Lastly, Madam Speaker. When I was with the Court of Appeals, when I joined the Court of Appeals, the immediate problem that I encountered is lack of transportation. The justices of the Court of Appeals have been treated like second-class citizens and compared, Madam Speaker, to the other branches of government, particularly the executive department. In this letter, it points out the transportation equipment outlay in the amount of 21,600,000 that would cater to the transportation needs of the justices who were not yet given new motor vehicles be appropriated. This is my last point, Madam Speaker. Will the distinguished sponsor join this representation in seeing to it that this slashed item in the proposed budget be restored?
We definitely join the Honorable Veloso on those requests for, specific requests, which are already included in the totals that I mentioned earlier. And in fact, we would even welcome if the Honorable Veloso will help us get some more, and maybe we can recover the entire 18 billion slashed by DBM.
As a legal cover, Madam Speaker, let me point out that while Section 29, Article 6, says no money shall be spent out of the treasury unless budgeted by Congress, and Section 25, Article 6, says that the Office of the President shall submit a proposed budget, Congress can reduce but not increase it. Comparing that to the 1935 Constitution, the 1935 Constitution said, "Congress cannot reduce except for the legislature and the judiciary." We have in the Constitution given the judiciary fiscal autonomy, but that is nothing if a third branch of the government will control how much they will have to spend. I hope the distinguished sponsor will take that into account in defending the budget of the judiciary. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Your Honor, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, maybe I move to recognize our minority leader, the Honorable Dani Suarez of the 3rd District of Quezon, for his interpretation.
Honorable Minority Leader, Congressman Dani Suarez is recognized.
We are very glad to see the distinguished minority leader appearing at the rostrum to interpolate, because the good thing is that after his interpolation, the determination of the consideration always follows. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Am I correct, distinguished sponsor? The 2019 proposed budget is 36.27, cash-based, equivalent as compared to the 2018, is higher by about 2 billion pesos, am I correct?
Your Honor, yes, thereabouts. It's exactly 37.330 billion, an increase of 1.976 billion, or 6%.
I would like to appreciate the judiciary for a high utilization rate, both in obligated, which is 94.7, and dispersed funds of the same amount of percentage. However, there is only concern on meeting targets in terms of case resolution. The Supreme Court and the trial courts had missed their target by a minimum percentage. May we know why, can we be accounted on this, Your Honor?
Distinguished Majority Leader, actually, the courts are meeting their targets. But there are periods within which, because cases are still to be decided, so they have not been added to the total, Your Honor. But everything is nearing close to 100%, and the others are beyond the 100% target, thank you.
One of my members, Congressman Tevez, echoed the concern on certain RTC and insufficient branches which resort to plug dockets and overwork judges. May we know, the agency have data on number of courts with inadequate sitting judges and number of courts lacking in all municipalities? This question had been raised already, Your Honor?
Yes, Your Honor, during the committee briefing, but we're happy that you brought this up, Your Honor, because this will probably, of course, to include it. But it's not only included, it is being presently processed by the JBC.
The Commission and Audit Report, Your Honor, Madam Speaker, gave an adverse opinion on the agency for its non-remittance to the National Treasury of the 62.5 million collected from seminar fees in relation to mandatory continuing legal education and the purchase of common use supplies worth 3.4 million from private suppliers without the required certificate of nonavailability of stocks. Has the agency resolved this matter?
Yes, the Supreme Court is presently reconciling the figures regarding these accounts, which has been submitted by, which have been brought up by the COA.
But have they remitted the money to the treasury?
It's still subject to reconciliation, Your Honor, but I've been assured that this will be done soon. That is the commitment on their part.
So it is parked somewhere, the money is still parked?
In the judiciary account, Your Honor, the speaker, but it will soon be properly remitted after that reconciliation that I spoke of.
Distinguished Chairman, Madam Speaker, can I be educated here? In, on litigations, the Department of Justice, I just would like to have some learning curve here. When you go to court on issues of, let's say, taxes, the government lawyer is provided by what office? Judiciary, by the judiciary, or by the Department of Justice, or the Bureau of Internal Revenue?
Cases, Your Honor, pertaining to taxes are within the jurisdiction of the Court of Tax Appeals.
That's what, that's why I'm asking. Normally, you have the fiscal's office, and you have the business interest that would be depending the case. So, my question is, who is the fiscal, and where are they coming from?
The prosecutors are deputized by the DOJ. They are lawyers, and deputized by DOJ for the purpose.
So, the distinguished sponsor is a lawyer. So, are we saying here that here is a company being charged either with avoidance or evasion, and the prosecutor is coming from an office that has no knowledge at all of the case? Wouldn't it be prudent that the lawyer should be coming from the agency rather than picking up from the Department of Justice?
Yes, there are lawyers, Your Honor, that specializes on tax laws, and they prosecute tax cases as deputized by the DOJ. So, there are no less qualified, Your Honor, than those who are also considered experts in the field.
Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, this representation is the, I conceptualized the Court of Tax Appeals, and expanded its shalat to three, hoping that this will be, hoping that the long litigation in terms of procedural cases on evasion or avoidance will take a shortcut. Kasi kumisan ho, sa haba ng litigation before, before we created the CTA, is that you don't have the luxury of time na sa haba ng kaso, tapos na ho 'yung, maaring sarado na 'yung kompanya o patay na 'yung may kaso, pending pa rin ho na nakadakit pa ho sa atin 'yung kaso. So, create po natin ang Court of Tax Appeals on the hope that it will be a mitigating or a deterrent for those who would be avoiding or evading. During the committee hearing, distinguished sponsor, Madam Speaker, I asked how many seizure and forfeiture had been institutionalized by the CTA, and the answer was none. May we know why we have this dismal performance in terms of the Court of Tax Appeals, Your Honor?
Regrettably, Your Honor, there are figures, but our panel here does not have it presently, but will certainly submit to you as soon as they can.
They don't have any record as of now, Your Honor? I think they should be prepared, because this is a very sensitive issue. This is taxes.
Yes, because of the exceptional cases involved, and the number is not really that many. But just the same, to get, to submit to you an accurate figure, they will need a little time to go over their records and let you know, Your Honor.
On another subject, Madam Speaker, the subject that was discussed earlier with Justice Peralta in connection with some equity on the provisions of benefits on members of HRE and PET, may I just remind him that in the period of the BICAM, those issues should be given you concern and resolution as this involve benefit for our hard-working employees of the court, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor. So, kung wala po 'yung data, may I ask how long will it take them to submit it? Because I am tempting to suspend consideration of this budget if I cannot have it today.
I will commit for them, Your Honor. Within the week, they will submit the data.
Do they, distinguished sponsor?
Even, they can even submit it to you within the day? Information is that they are not more than 10 anyway.
May napanalunan din po ba namang kaso ang CTA, distinguished sponsor? May nanalo po bang kaso ang gobyerno sa Court of Tax Appeals?
On the disposed cases with economic impact, taxpayers claim for refund?
That were denied.
That were denied. Totals hundred fifty-three?
Million.
Million?
Eight hundred forty-nine.
Eight hundred forty-nine, et cetera. And those granted were ninety-two... nine-hundred-and-ninety? Nine-twenty? Million? Million? Six-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand. And in the matter of assessment against taxpayers?
Those were upheld?
Those who were upheld, totals two-ninety-eight million zero-nine-three thousand. And canceled, one-hundred-one million seven-hundred-ninety-six thousand. So the total amount, Your Honor, is in favor of government at the amount of five billion four-hundred-thirty-five million one-hundred-fifty-three thousand.
Madam Speaker, can I approach the sponsor?
We ask for a minute suspension, Madam Speaker.
Minute suspension.
Which one?
The tax provisions. I have to put that on record.
Madam Speaker, I just have one parochial note here coming from the governor of the province of Quezon. The Supreme Court established Regional Trial Court in Luzena. However, they're asking for funding. The provincial government... I'm sorry, Madam Speaker. I just have a parochial concern here. Where... there is a lot that's being donated by the local government for the new Office of RTC in the city of Luzena. However, we are requesting fund from the Supreme Court for the construction of a new Hall of Justice. May we ask that the Office of the... that the Supreme Court set aside this parochial request from this representation, considering that it will be very embarrassing if the request from the governor, who happens to be my son, cannot be accommodated, Your Honor?
This is not my commitment. This is their commitment and they assure you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, inasmuch as all the queries seems had been answered by the sponsoring colleague, I... in behalf of the minority, we don't have any more question to raise for the proposed budget of the Supreme Court for 2019. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Thank you, Madam... Distinguished...
Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, in behalf of the majority, we join the minority in determination of the period of interpolation in the budget of the judiciary. So move, Madam Speaker.
An objection?
Madam Speaker, just a rewarding of two special provisions, very briefly, because we already presented the additional budget of six billion that is being requested by judiciary. Now, the special provision number two, may I just go over it too? Because this is an amendment of the entire special provision number two. To be rewarded. The above special provision number two, as worded in the 2019 NEP, will greatly affect the special allowance for the judiciary now being enjoyed by justices and judges and other judiciary officials with equivalent rank of CA justices and RTC or first level court judges. As such... Okay, Madam Speaker. I have been assured by the majority leader that this is already considered inserted in the period of amendment.
Any objection?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Is there any objection? I hear none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Period... motion to suspend for a few minutes, Madam Speaker.
Motion to suspend. Session resumed.
Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 8169.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up additional reference of business on the first reading and direct the Secretary General to read the titles of the bills and resolutions.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bills.
Additional Reference of Business Bill on First Reading, House Bill Number 8276, An Act Increasing the Bed Capacity of the Bicol Medical Center From 500 to 1,000 Beds, Upgrading the Service Facilities and Professional Healthcare Therein and Appropriating Funds Therefore, by Representative Gordo.
To the Committee on Health.
Resolutions, House Resolution 2193. Resolution Congratulating and Commending the Coaches of All the Participating Athletes in the 2018 ASEAN Games Held in Jakarta, Indonesia, by Representative Makapagal Arroyo.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution Number 2194. Resolution Congratulating and Commending the Gold, Silver, and Bronze Medalists in the 2018 ASEAN Games Held in Jakarta, Indonesia, by Representative Makapagal Arroyo.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we proceed to the period of... I move that we take up House Bill Number 8169. And direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the rules. So moved.
House Bill 8169, An Act Appropriating Funds For the Operation of the Government of the Republic of the Philippines from January 1 to December 31, 2019, and for other purposes.
Majority Leader.
Parliament... our parliamentary status is in the period of sponsorship and debate. May I move, Madam Speaker, to that we proceed with the period of interpolation and begin the consideration of the budget of the Civil Service Commission?
An objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Civil Service Commission family who are here with us today, headed by the Chairperson Alicia de la Rose Bala, Commissioner Leopoldo Roberto Valderosa Jr., Assistant Commissioner Ariel Rodequilio, Assistant Commissioner David Cabana Jr., and Executive Director Maria Antonette Velasco Aliones.
To the Civil Service Family, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Raoul Del Mar of the First District of Cebu City to sponsor and answer questions, if any, on the budget of the Civil Service Commission.
The Honorable Del Mar is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Majority Leader. We're ready to receive questions on the budget of the Civil Service Commission.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we recognize the Honorable Antonio Tinio of ACT Teachers Partilis for his interpolation?
The Honorable Tinio is recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, ang concern ko po ay kaugnay sa issue ng mga... ng kontrakwalisasyon sa hanay ng gobyerno. Partikular, 'yung malaganap na paggamit ng mga job order at contract of service sa iba't ibang ahensya ng gobyerno, maging sa national government agencies, sa local government units, at state universities and colleges, government-owned and controlled corporations, and many others. Habang nagbitiyo ng pangako ang pangulo na wawakasan daw niya ang endo or kontrakwalisasyon, bagay na hanggang ngayon ay hindi pa aktwal na napatutupad sa pribadong sektor, ay hindi dapat kaligdaan na ang gobyerno mismo ang isa sa pinakamalaking lumalabag sa karapatan ng mga manggagawa at empleyado sa pamamagitan ng malaganap na paggamit ng job order at contract of service. So, Madam Speaker, pwede po bang matanong ang sponsor, kagalang-galan na sponsor, una sa lahat? Ano po ba ang pinakahuling bilang ng mga job order and contract of service sa buong gobyerno? Madam Speaker?
As of September 4 this year, the total is six... Six-hundred-and-fifty-eight? Thousand, six-hundred-seventy-nine.
Six-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand po?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight. Six-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand may git. Ang mga job order at contract service. So alam ko po, may breakdown ang kagalang-galan na sponsor? Well, siguro, for the record, pwede po bang may share? Yung breakdown ng bilang na ito may git six-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Saan po sila matatagpuan?
Yes, Your Honor, Madam Speaker. Breakdown is NGA, one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-two. GOCC, thirty-three-thousand-fourty-five. ESUK, as you see, thirty-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-nine. Local Water District, eight-thousand-three-ninety-six. And LGU, which is the biggest figure in all, four-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So nakita po natin ang laki ng problema ng job order and contract of service. Hindi po natin papalawigin pa, pero alam naman natin kung gaano napagsasamantalahan ang mga job order at contract of service. Dahil hindi sila tinuturing na empleyado ng gobyerno, wala silang employer-employee relationship sa ahensya na gumagamit ng kanilang trabaho. Dahil doon, hindi sila binabayaran ng sweldo alinsunod sa Salary Standardization Law, kadalasan mas pababa ang kinikita nila. Kesa sa tinatakda sa SSL, hindi sila entitled sa mga benefits ng government employees katulad ng GSIS, Field Health, at iba pa. Hindi sila nakatatanggap ng mga bonuses na natatanggap ng mga regular... Hindi sila nakatatanggap ng mga bonuses na natatanggap ng mga regular government employees, and so on. And of course, wala silang ano mang job security or security of tenure. Panapanahon, kailangan silang mag-apply muli para sa renewal ng kanilang kontrata. Pwede ilang buwan lang 'yan sa kaso ng job order o every year sa kaso ng mga contract of service, no? Okay, ngayon, bilang tugon, sa issue na ito ng contractualisasyon, itong June 15, 2017, naglabas ang Civil Service Commission, Commission on Audit, at Department of Budget and Management ng Joint Circular Number 1, Series of 2017. Ito 'yung Joint Circular on Rules and Regulations Governing Contract of Service and Job Order Workers in the government. So, ang isang pangunahing concern dito ay ang transitory provisions, particular 11.1. Agencies may renew the individual contracts of existing contract of service or job order workers until December 31, 2018. Thereafter, hiring of contract of service and job order workers shall be in accordance with the provisions of this Joint Circular. As far as practicable and to ensure protection of the existing contract of service or job order workers, the institutional contract to be entered into by government agencies with a contractor or service provider shall include a provision which will state that the existing qualified contract of service or job order workers hired by the agency shall be given priority in the hiring by the contractor or service provider. Okay. 11.2, Existing Contract of Service or Job Order Workers Shall Be Given Priority in the Appointment by the Agency to Its Vacant Positions, Provided That These Workers Meet the Appropriate Eligibility and Other Qualification Requirements for the Position Subject to Existing Civil Service Law and Rules. And 11.3, In accordance with Section 90 of the General Provisions of the Fiscal Year 2017 General Appropriations Act, Government Agencies Shall Review Their Functions, Systems, and Procedures, Organizational Structure, and Staffing to Determine the Appropriate Manpower Complement for Their Programs, Activities, Projects. Creating of Permanent Positions May Be Considered for Regular Functions, While Hiring of Casual or Contractual Personnel May Be Considered for Projects and Activities That Are Temporary in Nature, Subject to Approval of the Oversight Agencies Concerned and to Existing Budgeting and Accounting Rules and Regulations. So 'yan po 'yung transitory provisions, binasa ko po for the record, at may mga ilang concerns po ang mahigit 650,000 job order and contract of service. Ang isa po kasi, ang sinasabi ko dito sa Joint Circular, after December 31, 2018, meaning the end of this fiscal year, this year, hindi na po maaring gumamit ng job order or contract of service unless through service providers, so institutional job order or contract of service. So, ibig sabihin, parang may ahensya na makikipagkontrata ang opisina ng gobyerno at doon dadaan ang mga job order or contract of service. So ang isang, tapos ang isa pang binabanggit sa transitory provisions, kailangan mag-review ang mga binibigyan ng buong 2018 ang mga ahensya ng gobyerno, lalo na 'yung maraming mga job order or contract of service. At kung kinakailangan, lilighan ang mga bagong posisyon para 'yung mga dating job order or contract of service na actually gumagampan ng regular functions ng ahensya ay dapat gawing regular. So ibig sabihin, kailangan nito na may creation ng new plantilla positions para sa regularization ng mga job order or contract of service. So ang pangamba po, ng maraming mga job order or contract of service, habang lumalapit na ang December 31, 2018 deadline, ay pangamba nila na wala namang silang, wala namang nililigha pang bagong mga positions, plantilla positions para sa regularization ng mga government employees ng mga job order or contract of service. Pangalawa, ang pangamba ng maraming mga job order or contract of service matatanggal sila after December 31, 2018. So pwede po bang magbigay ang sponsor ng kalinawan hingil sa status ng implementation, particularly ng transitory provisions na ito?
Yes. The deadline that appears is not made of stone. Right now, consultations have been made with practically all public labor sectors and other stakeholders, and the conclusion that I see is that there will be revisions on this Joint Circular pursuant to addressing the concerns during their consultations. So, that is the situation, Your Honor. So, I'm sure that they know already, Civil Service Commission knows already the problem, and they can very well address this when the time comes. Yeah, you're right, Your Honor, these workers... Yes. The, first of, Your Honor, Madam Speaker, the issuance of this opposite Joint Circular does not intend to displace COS and JO workers. The agencies have the option to reengage their services either through direct hiring or, as you said, through institutional contracts, subject of course to the requirements set forth under the Joint Circular. Since the issuance of the Joint Circular last year, and in the light of feedbacks from stakeholders, the Civil Service Commission has conducted extensive consultations with other agencies, including those with large number of JOs and COS, as well as, as I said, public sector unions. The CS, the Civil Service Commission, COA, and DBM are currently reviewing the Joint Circular towards coming out with the necessary revisions anytime soon. So, we foresee, Your Honor, that the concerns that you pointed out will be, will definitely, should be worked out before the end of the year, the deadline. And just for information on this, the workers are employable through the following modes of hiring employment. They shall be hired by the contracting institutional service providers. They shall be given priority, consideration, and the filling up of vacant plantilla positions in the engaging government agency, provided that they meet the qualification requirements for the position. And they shall be issued casual contractual appointments for project-based, short-term employments through lump sum appropriations.
Okay. Thank you for that response, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor. Yes. Una, gusto ko lang po magclarify sa posisyon na pinanggagalingan ng kinatawang ito hingil sa issue ng contractualisasyon, or 'yung malaganap na paggamit ng job order at contract of service sa buong gobyerno. Katulad ng nabanggit kanina, 650,000 mahigit ang mga job order and contract of service sa national government agencies, sa local government units, at iba pa ang mga opisina ng gobyerno. Napakalaganap nito, labas pa 'yan sa mahigit 1.3 million na regular government employee. So, that is the true size of government service. It's 1.3 million plus another 650,000. However, these 650,000 are not even considered as government employees. Yet, in the case of many key frontline agencies, like the Department of Health, for example, or the DSWD, in fact, the bulk, the majority of workers in DOH and DSWD are job order or contract of service. Yung karamihan ng mga nurse, mga midwife, even mga doktor sa Department of Health, job order or contract of service. As a DSWD, the overwhelming majority of workers in DSWD, 'yung mga frontline, particular sa kanilang Pantawid Pamilya Pilipino program, ay mga contract of service, no? So, para sa atin, para maipatupad po, yung, para matugunan ang sitwasyon dyan, ang kailangan gawin ng gobyerno ay, first of all, 'yung direct hiring, gawin silang regular employee. But that would entail that government create tens of thousands of new plantilla positions, no? So unfortunately, and the sponsor can correct me here, nandyan 'yung staff natin sa Committee on Appropriations, they would probably know the answer to this, if not the Civil Service. I don't see any provisions for the creation of tens of thousands of new plantilla positions in order to regularize job order and contract of service. In fact, ang nakikita pa natin sa Department of Health, budget, for example, binuhasan pa nga 'yung budget nila for health personnel, health service personnel. I don't see a budget for regularization of the workers in DSWD, for example, unless, sasabihin sa atin, na merong provision in the MPBF, Miscellaneous Personnel Benefits Fund, for such regularization. Meron po ba, Mister, would the sponsor be in a position to give a response in that regard?
Yes, it's being recommended in the Miscellaneous Personal Benefit Fund. So, which we can give you the figure of DOH, it's already alone, is eight billion.
Eight billion?
Yes, and the other numbers can be given to you as soon as they are ever... They'll be given to you right...
Yes, please.
Today.
Thank you po, we will await the information. You know, Madam Speaker, ang isang problema kasi sa MPBF, it's lump sum. So, we would appreciate clarification on how that will be distributed. Of course, strictly speaking, this MPBF is outside of the budget of the Civil Service Commission. However, it has a direct bearing on this very important policy which the Civil Service Commission, along with the DBM and COA, have formulated in regard to the issue of job orders and contract of service. Kaya po, tinatanong po natin 'yan. Okay, so 'yun po ang isang kailangan, at pinaglalaba natin, 'yung option of direct hire, no? And I would like to take this opportunity of the plenary debates on the budget to also register our objection to the option of institutional engagement by government agencies for the hiring of workers. Essentially, that's contracting out, or outsourcing, outsourcing of government services to the private sector. So ganun po ang, ganun po ang tinutula na solusyon ng Joint Circular na ito. So kung hindi ireregular ng gobyerno, 'yung mga manggagawa, ang gagawin will be outsourcing, engaging a private company to provide a certain service to government. Some major examples of that would be, for example, the way COMILIC has outsourced the running of the national and local elections to a private corporation, alam natin 'yan, 'yung Smartmatic. So, 'yung Smartmatic, 'yung mga personnel nila, sila ang nagpapatakbo ng sistema, ng mga makina, they maintain the accounting machines, the databases, and so on and so forth. Of course, they are under the supervision of COMILIC, but the actual personnel that run the elections are personnel of Smartmatic, not government, not government employees. So may basic problem po ang kinatawang ito sa ganoong modelo. Dahil para sa atin, iba pa rin 'yung, na 'yung serbisyo ng gobyerno, essential and basic services especially, are provided directly by qualified government employees. Kaya po para sa atin, ang pangunahing option sa, bilang solusyon sa problema ng malaganap na paggamit ng job order at contract of service, ay kailangan direct hiring, gawin silang regular, regular ng gobyerno mismo. Yung mga doktor at mga nurse, kailangan maging direktang empleyado ng gobyerno, hindi lang in-outsource, provided to government by some private corporation. Okay, so 'yun po ang isa. If we may refer to the same issue in the private sector, 'yan po ang tinututulan ng mga trade unions. Ang sinasabi ng Department of Labor and Employment, ang solusyon sa problema ng EDO ay, again, 'yung paghire through service providers. Sabi ng Dole, for as long as regular employees sila ng service provider, di wala ng EDO. Hindi kailangan maging direct employee sila ng kompanya or korporasyon. Hindi po tinatanggap 'yan ng mga manggagawa sa pribadong sektor. At tama lang na hindi rin dapat tanggapin ng mga empleyado sa pampublikong sektor, for various reasons, from maintaining quality of service to accountability, issues of accountability. Well, actually, Madam Speaker, 'yan po ang pangunahing concern natin sa... Well, actually, Madam Speaker, 'yan po ang pangunahing concern natin sa issue ng, uh, sa budget ng, uh, Civil Service Commission. Uh, maraming salamat po sa paglilinaw at sa, at, uh, sa pagbanggit na, just, again, just for, for the record, Madam Speaker, uh, what is the status of this December 31, 2018 deadline? Is there a concrete assurance from the Civil Service Commission that, uh, uh, December 31, 2018 deadline will, uh, not be implemented? Ibig sabihin, hindi magkakaroon ng malaganap na tanggalan dahil sa December 31 deadline na ito?
Uh, Your Honor, you have articulated the problems, uh, very succinctly. And, uh, regarding the deadline, it will not be, I have word that they, it will not be imposed strictly because, uh, amendments, revisions, uh, will definitely, uh, be coming up soon. And, uh, will, we hope, hopefully, it will address, uh, uh, the deadline. So that if there is, um, the need to extend it, then, uh, I don't see any problem. But, uh, what we need to do is comply with, uh, the solutions to the problems you initiated before the deadline.
Well, thank you for that, uh, and, uh, I thank the sponsor for, uh, um, appreciating the issues and concerns that we have raised. And we hope that, uh, uh, the sponsor and our colleagues here will work together to finally resolve the issue of EDO, job order, contract of service, and their abuse in government. No, so, para pumawakasan 'yan, kailangan pong kumilos ang kongresong ito at iya kin na magkakaroon ng sapat na bilang ng mga bagong plantilla items para maging regular. Kung hindi man lahat, ay ang karamihan ng mga kasalukuyang, uh, EDO, job order, contract of service. With that, Madam, Madam Speaker, uh, I end my interpellation. Thank you.
We thank the Honorable Tinio for the valuable, uh, uh, assistance that his, uh, uh, his feedbacks will play in the revision or amendment of the Joint Circular. Uh, and we hope that, uh, uh, the Honorable Tinio will be available should, and definitely because we will be needing, uh, him in, uh, finalizing the revisions and amendments. Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, uh, may we recognize, uh, the Honorable Amihilda J. Sangkopan of Amin Partilis for her interpellation.
The Honorable Sangkopan is recognized.
Madam Speaker, will the Honorable Sponsor yield to some questions?
Yes, of course, to, uh, the Honorable Sangkopan, uh, Partilista, uh, Congresswoman.
Anak Mindanao.
Anak Mindanao.
Madam Speaker, uh, Honorable Sponsor, foremost, anything I'd like to make a manifestation. I labid before the Civil Service Commission to act on the eligibility equivalence of our Sharia counselors. And alhamdulillah, they have done something to ensure that our Sharia counselors will not be in limbo and that the eligibility of, 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 of our counselors are now much clearer. Honorable Sponsor, this is my question. Under the budget of the Civil Service Commission, 67.5% of the total program funds goes to Civil Service, Professionalization and Workplace Cooperation Program. May I know the basis for, for the allocation of such to this program?
This will be for operations, uh, learning and development programs, and examinations, uh, uh, Your Honor.
Those are the activities forming under this program. What I'm asking is the basis for, for this program. Do you, we have, our government, do we have a strategic human resource management and development plan for all our government employees? That to me is the basis for this programming.
Yes, uh, that is provided under the, uh, Philippine Development Plan, Chapter 5.
Can this representation be provided with the Strategic Human Resource Development Plan? I'm not asking for the provisions under the Chapter 5 of the PDP 2040. I'm asking for the Strategic Human Resource Development Plan.
Yes, the, uh, the, uh, resource persons here from Civil Service Commission, uh, 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 wants to, is at ready right now and will, uh, provide you with complete data so that, uh, it will be complete, uh, Your Honor, uh, within the week, uh, Your Honor, if, uh, you allow.
Thank you very much, uh, Honorable Sponsor, Madam Speaker. Uh, my last and final question would basically be on the next program of the Civil Service Commission. And that is the Civil Service Human Resource Governance Program. May this representation be enlightened, Honorable Sponsor and Madam Speaker?
Now, this would include, uh, Your Honor, Madam Speaker, implementations of the, the policies. And one of the programs is, uh, PRIME, HRM. That they would like to, uh, uh, made, uh, uh, of international, uh, standard, uh, on human resource development, in all agencies.
Is the Civil Service Commission, Honorable Sponsor, Madam Speaker, aware of the Human Development Index of our country?
Yes, uh.
What then is our ranking this year, or maybe in the latest HDI report?
In a minute, uh, Your Honor, Madam, Madam Speaker, while the Civil Service Commission, uh, officials are insofar as the year 2015, 16 is concerned. One hundred, we rank 115th. Now, uh, the current, uh, ranking, 2017, 113 ranking. Yes, and, uh, 2018 is, uh, forthcoming yet, uh, and we, um, anticipate that we will be improving, uh, uh, our performance on that basis.
Based on the response of the Honorable Sponsor, Madam Speaker, it, it shows that we are somehow increasing in our HDI. And I hope that the HDI is a basis for the Human Resource Development Plan. My, the primary concern of Anak Mindanao actually, other than ending contractualization, is of course ensuring that the current government employees of the Republic of the Philippines are efficient and competent enough. So, hope that the Human Resource Development and Management Plan, Madam Speaker, Honorable Spence, uh, Sponsor, would, would somehow address those concerns. I have no other questions. Um, to the family of the Civil Service Commission, maraming salamat po sa pagtugon sa aking mga katanungan, Honorable Sponsor and Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Your Honor, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Majority, uh, Madam Speaker, uh, may we recognize, uh, the Honorable Arnulfo Arne Tevez Jr. of the 3rd District of Negros Oriental for his interpellation.
The Honorable, um, Arnulfo Tevez is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good morning, uh, good afternoon, everybody. Will the Honorable Sponsor be open to some questions?
Yes, uh, to, uh, the, our colleague in the, Visayan Black, the Honorable Tevez.
Okay. Ang tanong ko lang, 'yung mga appointees natin sa gobyerno, allowed ba na iappoint 'yung may mga kaso? Or may ano siya, depende sa kaso?
And so far as, uh, cases, uh, which are pending, they still, uh, can remain, uh, uh, they can still be appointed, Your Honor. There is no prohibition on that. But if they are dismissed from the service, there will be an absolute prohibition.
So no matter what the, kahit ano pa 'yung background niya, kahit gaano pa kagrabe 'yung kaso, basta hindi convicted, pwede siya?
Uh, I'm told that, uh, uh, in, in the selection, if they are, uh, if, if, if the, uh, issue at hand, uh, is a factor for, uh, his appointment or not, uh, is for the selection board to, to consider. So, but normally under, uh, uh, legally speaking, there is no prohibition, Your Honor.
So no prohibition?
But, uh, it depends. Uh, just because there is no prohibition, that doesn't mean that, uh, he or she will get the appointment. It's still up to the selection board to, uh, consider the, uh, the circumstances, uh, of, uh, of the case.
May record ba kayo sa lahat ng appointees ng gobyerno na may mga pending cases? Or you do not keep track?
Insofar as the administrative cases are concerned, pending with the, the commission, yes, Your Honor.
No, that's not what I meant. What, what I was asking is, lahat ng govern, appointees ng ating gobyerno, from the lowest to the highest, doesn't matter. Meron ba kayong record kung ilan 'yung may mga kas, sa may mga kaso? Or it's not being kept track?
Yes, you're right, Your Honor. It's not being ke- kept track of, uh, as of this point in time.
So all, all appointees of government, meron kayong record sa background nila?
Except for presidential appointees, Your Honor.
Except for presidential appointments, okay. Thank you very much. That's all, Madam Speaker. Um, thank you, Honorable Sponsor.
Thank you, Honorable Tevez, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we recognize, uh, the Representative Franz El Castro of, uh, Act Teachers Partilis for her interpellation.
The Honorable Franz Castro is recognized.
Thank you. Marami po salamat, Madam Speaker. Magandang umaga po sa ating lahat. So, first of all, Madam Speaker, I would like to thank the Civil Service for the letter that they sent to my office as regards to my queries in the, in the budget briefing. But there are, but I would like to clarify some of the items here. Um, so una-una muna, uh, Madam Speaker, Mister Sponsor, as regards to this, uh, Joint Circular Number 1. So dito po sa Joint Circular Number 1, so I, I asked during the brief, briefing that if the, uh, employees were consulted, government employees were consulted here in the, ano, in the Joint Circular Number 1, sasabi po ay, opo, uh, yes. Pero napansin ko po dito sa mga kinunsulta or pino po sa consultation after the Civil Service COA, DBM Circular Number 1 has been, um, implemented or or issued. So I can, I, I don't see any representative here from the teacher sector since the teacher sector constitutes, um, almost one-third of the bureaucracy. So, may I know, how did you determine the organization that would be, that would attend here, that attended here in the consultative meeting dated May 11 to May 18? Madam Speaker.
What is the basis?
Sir, basis po 'yan, each RRO, PSLMC po. We invited, we invited kasi po, 'yung mga confederations.
We, uh, they invited the confederations. And as, yeah, aside from that, uh, uh, like, uh, the CIU, PGA, uh, PSE, FEB, FFA, uh, and the like, Your Honor.
Um, Madam Speaker, yes, I can, I can read here the, the invitee. So what I, what I am asking, Madam Speaker, is why is it that there is no teacher representative here? Why confederation? Uh, for example, Madam Speaker, don't, don't the Civil Service know that, that the teacher sector are, are a very important part of the government service? And also, Madam Speaker, um, for example, an, an, an organization of the Alliance of Concerned Teachers, uh, the Alliance of Concerned Teachers, for example, Madam Speaker, has registered, um, 16 out of, uh, 18 regions in the country. A C T is a registered union of the Civil Service and the Dole. Don't they, don't they, um, don't they, are they important to the, are they important to the Civil Service Commission? So why is it that I cannot see representative here from the, from the teacher sector?
Yes, uh, uh, individual organizations are considered invited because they belong to because they belong to their respective confederations.
Um, I don't think the Alliance of Concerned Teachers, Madam Speaker, or any teacher organization belongs to a confederation.
Uh, I am told that they do, uh, belong. Uh, the teachers groups, uh, to PS Link. Most of them.
Uh, I beg to disagree, Madam Speaker. So, um, so the biggest, uh, union of teachers are in the Alliance of Concerned Teachers. That's for the record in the Civil Service Commission as registered and accredited union. But I don't think, uh, this organization belongs to the PS Link that you are telling about, uh, Mr. Sponsor, Madam Speaker.
Yes, your, your concern is, uh, well taken. Um, obviously, they have not, uh, invited, uh,
So may I know for the record, why are they invite, why are, why are the teacher sector not invited here?
Certainly not deliberate, uh, only that they, uh, place emphasis on the confederations. But, Your Honor, uh, it is not, uh, there is time to still, uh, schedule, uh, a, uh, another consultation and they will consult you, uh, so that those who were not invited in the past will be, uh, the ones given priority. Uh, and, uh, and they will get in touch with you, Your Honor, uh, uh, if, if, uh, we can fix the date on that. Um, to fix the date and to get your, your resource persons.
Um, uh, this is just, uh, um, just for the record, Madam Speaker, what do we mean by, uh, to the Civil Service? What do you mean by sole and exclusive bargaining, bargaining agent of, uh, an agency, for example? What do you mean by that?
They're accredited, uh, union, uh, which can negotiate with the management.
So they are the ones who will represent a certain?
The rank and five, yes.
Yeah, a certain sector to the management, right?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
But don't worry, Your Honor. I can see clearly that there is a need, uh, to, uh, invite others. So they must schedule another consultation soon so that, uh, uh, others who have, who should have been invited will be invited this time.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Sponsor. Thank you, Madam Speaker. So ang sinasabi po ba ng ating, uh, ginung sponsor ay, uh, commitment yan? Yan po ba ay commitment ng Civil Service sa ating mga teachers?
We will stand by that commitment of the, uh, of the officials of CSC. And even, um, that inclusive commitment to consult you, uh, in, on the date. And secondly, on who, uh, uh, you feel should be invited, which are not in the list of those that they will, they will invite.
Thank you, ma, thank you very much, Mr. Sponsor. So another concern po, uh, just a clarification dito sa mga sagot po natin dito sa aking letter o sa concern po natin dur- during the Civil Service briefing, um, there is, on, ano, on PvP, on proportional vacation pay for teachers. So there is a, an omnibus rules on leave. So that the Civil Service Memorandum Circular Number 41 in 1998, nakalagay po dito Section 6, Teachers Leave. Teachers shall not be entitled to the usual vacation and sick leave credits but to proportional vacation pay of seventy days of summer vacation plus fourteen days of Christmas vacation. And then a teacher who has rendered continuous service in school year without incurring absences without pay or not more than one and a half days is entitled to eighty-four days of proportional vacation pay. Uh, pero dito po dun sa sagot natin, sa, sa tanong ko po, dinagdagan po natin 'yung omnibus, uh, rules on leave na nilagay po niyo dito, the total PvP that shall be earned by the teachers shall be based on the computation to be provided by the Department of Education every school year. So ito naman po ay ginagawa. Kaya lang, ang nagiging problema po natin ay 'yung double deduction. So for example, kahit na siya ay paid leave using he, using hers or his service credits, pero sa computation po ng PvP, ina-add po lahat ng mga absences. So meron po tayo ditong, um, um, circular or memorandum na kung saan nakalagay po dito 'yung number of days absent. Wala pong ano, nilalagay, wala pong ano rito, wala pang, wala pong sinasabi dito whether your absences are, uh, whether the, the absences incurred ay binayaran na po ito nung sinatawag nilang service credits. Pero nakalagay po dito walang ano eh, walang nakalagay diyan na ano.
Yes, Your Honor. They, they, uh, inform the commission that it is not double deduction. Teachers' absences are deducted in their earned vacation service credits. Otherwise, it would be deducted to their salary. The PvP refers to compensation of teaching personnel during Christmas and summer vacation computed in proportion to the number of days they have served during the school year. But you're right, Your Honor. You're right. So, uh, um, the commission will have to, to, uh, work this out uh, with, uh, DEP Ed to address your concern.
Uh, so, okay po. Pwede po bang mag-ano, mag, mag, mag-schedule ang Civil Service ng consultation with the Department of Education?
Certainly, Your Honor. Certainly, Your Honor, and, um...
So kailan po natin 'yun, i-hold 'yung schedule?
They can do it this month, Your Honor, and, uh, they will, if you're available, uh, they, they will, they're hoping that you can attend as well.
Okay. So another commitment, Mr. Sponsor, Madam Speaker.
Yes, plenty of commitments that, uh, will be implemented, Your Honor.
As regard to save civils, uh, as regards to the service credits, Madam, uh, Mr. Sponsor, so is it true that for the teachers, they were, they are only allowed to have a fifteen days maximum service credits in a year?
That's a DEP Ed, uh, order, Your Honor.
DEP Ed order? So wala po ito sa Civil Service?
Uh, this, uh, emanates from the Department of Education. Uh, this policy is, Your Honor.
So what is the policy of the Civil Service as regards to the maximum or minimum service credits earned by a government employee?
Yes, the department order, uh, of the, uh, DEP Ed, uh, that they issued, uh, in two thousand thirteen. Two thousand three yet, uh, and... And list of activities where they can earn service credits.
I kindly repeat, uh, Mr. Sponsor, I can understand. So my question is, so is the Civil Service have a guidelines on how or, or, on the, on, as regards to the minimum or maximum? Or the, or is it the agency that, uh, that decides on it?
Yes, it's really the agency.
So in the Civil Service, we don't have any guidelines as regard to the, uh, service credits?
And so far as teachers are concerned, not, not yet, Your Honor.
So what is the opinion of the Civil Service if the, the union asked for more than fifteen days service credits? Do we have a legal impediment to that?
They have to take this up with DEP Ed, uh, Your Honor, Madam Speaker. Yeah, and the teachers' group.
Okay. So, uh, so this is another agenda maybe in our, in our dialogue?
Yes, all this can be done in one, uh, uh, consultation so that, uh, we don't have to bother you, Your Honor, uh, on, uh, several consultations, uh, over a period of time. So insofar as all your concerns, uh, are addressed, uh, they will all be taken up in that, in that, uh, first consultation, which will be scheduled with you, Your Honor.
Okay, last question, uh, Mr. Sponsor. As regards to the monetization of, uh, service leaves or service credits, so there are, are teachers that are, uh, teachers do not have the right to have the monetization at the end of the school year. So do we have a guidelines or memo about that? That teachers are exempted from monetization?
So what is the answer? What is the answer? Ito? The monetization of leave credits may be allowed subject to specific provision in DEP Ed Order Number 53, Series of 2003, uh, referring to vacation service credits, which provides that, uh, as follows. Uh, in the monetization of teachers' leave credits, unused vacation service credits shall be converted into vacation sick, uh, leave credits. Uh, after monetization, the remaining vacations' sick leave credits shall be converted back to vacation service credits. This is of course subject to availability, availability of funds.
So is it, uh, so but based on the DEP Ed order that you have read, um, Mr. Sponsor, so teachers are not, uh, exempted from monetization? If there are, uh, service credits that they earned for the year, they can convert that, uh, uh, to monetization subject to the availability of funds? Is that correct?
Yes, the teachers can monetize, uh, subject to availability of funds.
Um, kasi po ma, Madam Speaker, ang nagiging experience po nun teacher, hindi po sila nakakapagmonetize. Ang nagiging dahilan ng, ng principal o ng, ng SDS ay dahil daw sila ay meron ng PvP. Related ba 'yung PvP na yan o 'yung mga ano na yan dun sa monetization? Why is it that the non-teaching personnel can monetize their, their earned civil, uh, service credits?
Yes, uh, um, it boils down to availability of funds. So again, Your Honor, Madam Speaker, they, uh, they undertake to include that also in the caucus, uh, that will be scheduled. So they have plenty of, uh, matters to take up, uh, with you, with, with your honor. So, uh, you are, uh, the, the consultation will not, um, be held without your presence. So they will consult your, uh, open dates uh, when you will be available. And, uh, and they have already, they already have the matters that, uh, they will include, so, uh, but that doesn't mean that, uh, you will be limited to those matters. If you, should you have additional, uh, issues to take, then, uh, of course, it will be considered.
Um, without, with, with that commitment, Madam Speaker, I end my interpolation. Thank you, Mr. Sponsor.
Thank you, Honorable Franz Castro. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Madam Spee, Madam Speaker, uh, may we recognize the Honorable Francisco Datol of the Senior Citizens Party List?
The Honorable Datol is recognized?
Honorable Sponsor. My colleagues, Civil Service families, 'yung akin lang po, isa lang manifestasyon. Nakita po natin na ang Civil Service Commission ay unti-unti ng nagkakaroon ng katuparan ang lahat ng kanilang panunungulan na kanilang disisyonan ang mga mali at papurihan ang mga tama. Alam niyo po, Madam Speaker, Honorable Sponsor, dito po sa Seventeenth Congress, nakita namang po natin na karamihan sa atin more than one hundred member na po tayo ng senior citizens bilang minority. Ako po tumatayo rito para punahin ang mga mali at purihin ang mga tama. Sa araw na ito, bayaan niyong papurihan ko ang mga nagawa ng mga Civil Service family sa atin, sa taong bayan na kanilang talaga namang binubusisi nila at halos, kung minsan, lampas ng oras ay tuliparin ang kanilang pagtatrabaho. Kaya, sa mga sandaling ito, alam ko na 'yung programa para sa Civil Service ng ating pamahalaan ay maganda na ang tinatakbo ng komisyon ito. At bilang manifestasyon, muli, sa araw na ito, bayaan niyo na kahit paano pasalamatan in behalf of ten point five million senior citizens sa buong Pilipinas ang tanggapang ito na nagkaroon ng malasakit sa ating mga empleyado at sa taong bayan. At, Madam Speaker, Honorable Sponsor, 'yung pong akin na ibinumong kahi, 'yung pong bababa at lahat ng mga empleyado ng Civil Service, kagaya na ko sinabi nung, nung nakaraang commitehirings, isa po ako sa maging sponsor para itaas ang kanilang salary lahat ng empleyado ng Civil Service. 'Yun lang po, Madam Speaker, distinguished, Inspector.
Thank you, Honorable Francisco Datol, Party List, Senior Citizens.
Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Muhammad Kalid Imaporro of the First District of Plano del Norte for his interpolation.
The Honorable Kalid Imaporro is recognized?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Uh, may I ask if the Honorable Delmar is willing to answer a few questions?
Of course, I need time to the Honorable Imaporro.
Um, first and foremost, uh, when I fir, when I sat through the budget briefing of the CSC, I think last week or the week before that, uh, there was a lot of talk about Endo or the end of Endo, uh, in the government as far as the Civil Service is concerned. Is there any move to end Endo, um, as far as CSC is concerned?
Uh, the, the, uh, thing is that the Joint Circular, uh, hopefully, uh, will be amended to include, uh, your concerns, uh, Your Honor. But, uh...
Madam Speaker, may I know what Joint Circular this is? Um, so I can look it up also.
We'll, uh, provide you, uh, a copy, Your Honor.
Okay, I'll, I'll accept that, Madam Speaker. Um, let me move forward. Uh, the Civil Service in its own right is an independent body. But at same time also, us here in Congress have our own independence. It's actually our... It's actually our constitutional mandate to create laws and legislation. So my basic neophyte understanding as a first-time congressman is that we make the laws. If there will be Endo, to, an end of Endo to be implemented by the CSC, it should emanate from Congress. Am I correct from saying this, madam speaker?
That's correct, your honor.
May I ask, madam speaker, again, is there any existing bill filed here in Congress to end Endo in government service?
There are bills for regularization, but no, uh, specific bill on, uh, ending, job orders and contract of service workers.
Uh, thank you, madam speaker. Um, well, my real point or my real manifestation or concern is in regards to changes that are made in the omnibus rules and appointments and other human resource actions. Um, can the good congressman from Cebu City please place into the record what were the changes or amendments that were made on the omnibus rules and appointments and other human resources actions that were made during the Duterte administration?
You can submit for the entire list of the changes, madam Speaker. So we can submit for this.
Um, that would need, uh, time, your honor, to prepare it for you.
Ma-madam speaker, in the, for the interest of time, I'll go specific to my concern. And that's an amendment that was, if I'm not mistaken, please correct me if I'm wrong, an amendment to these omnibus rules on appointments and other HR actions that was made around last, sometime towards the end of Two Thousand and Seventeen. And this amendment reads, "In no case shall a casual appointment be issued to fill a vacant plantilia position or a casual employee perform the duties and responsibilities of the vacant plantilia position." So this is in regards to casual employees of the government, madam speaker. Uh, and this amendment, um, actually, if I'm not mistaken, prohibits the, the approval of casual employees if there is a vacant plantilia position existing in the government plantilia. May I have this confirmed, madam speaker?
Um, there, the focus seems to be that, uh, it is in the matter of, uh, a casual, uh, appointed to...
'Yung casual are made to perform the functions of regular employees. Yes, sir. 'Yung prohibition na po 'yun. Kasi kung may vacant position na man dapat, they fill it up.
And that is prohibited because, uh, uh, the thing to do is, if there's a position, they, they should be filled up.
Well, thank you, madam speaker. Uh, and I again thank the Honorable Del Mar for clarifying that because it caused confusion for us in the province of Lanau del Norte. And that's why I'm speaking here today. For example, one of the biggest casual employees in our province are nurses. When we started our healthcare reform program in the province, we saw that the, the province, the budgetary needs for nurses cannot be sufficed by the era. So our solution for this is to declare the provincial government hospitals as public enterprises. The income of the provincial hospitals reached about two hundred to three hundred million per year from Phil Health Card claims. Now, if you will take those casual employees that are being funded by the income of the hospitals and charge that to the era, we will surpass the forty-five percent salary cap limit that is required of, by our rules. Ang problema natin when this, in, uh, in our province is when this, uh, this amendment was made on December Two Thousand Seventeen, our casual, our requests for the appointment of casual employees were rejected by the Civil Service. And that, in effect, hampered our government service in the local level. This has been corrected, if I'm not mistaken, madam speaker, on March Two Thousand Eighteen. I'm moving now forward, Mr., uh, the Honorable Del Mar. And please confirm if this is also correct, that the reappointment on March, sometime March, early this year, Two Thousand Eighteen, uh, the omnibus rules on appointments and other human resources and so forth, uh, this has been amended again to correct that problem. It has been amended with this provision. Reappointment or renewal of casual appointments to the same position shall be submitted to the CSC for notation only, without the need for approval slash validation. However, reappointment of casual appointments to other positions shall be submitted for approval slash validation by the CSR field office concerned. Am I correct in saying this? That there is a new amendment that added to or corrected the problem of the previous amendment, which was amended, uh, late Two Thousand Seventeen, and then a new amendment was introduced on Two Thousand and Eighteen?
Uh, just a fast, uh, a provision to fast-track the processing of appointments, but not on that, uh, correcting the hiring of casuals when, when there is a vacant plantilia position.
Okay, thank you, madam, madam speaker.
And, uh, just by way of, uh, reminder, your honor, um, there was already a meeting conducted between your honor and representatives of the commission, Regional Office Number Ten, on September Sixth, Twenty Eighteen. In said meeting, it was clarified that this disapproval of the renewal of appointments of concerned casuals, nurses, medical officers, is based on Section Nine, Rule Four of the Twenty Seventeen Omnibus Rules on Appointments and Other Human Resources Actions, which states that in no case shall a casual appointment be used to fill a vacant plantilia position or casual employee perform the duties and responsibilities of the vacant position. Uh, your honor was satisfied, according to my feedback, with the explanation and suggestions of the C-Commission of Civil Service Regional Office Number Ten, and agreed that the necessary action now lies with LGU, specifically the province of Lanau del Norte, that is issuance of an SP resolution declaring the created vacant positions as not funded. In fact, there's a note here that in addition to the Sangunian Panlalavigan, the local finance committee may also be consulted or it may issue a certification that such positions were not funded.
Uh, madam speaker, yes, uh, well, uh, I won't get to the details on how we resolve our problem, but in a nutshell, it's a matter of the local government being creative in a way that we can resolve our problems and conform to the rules and regulation of the CSC. Uh, I'd like to now move forward and, uh, basically, um, ask or manifest so that the CSC can hear, at the very least, madam speaker, that when they make, um, changes in their omnibus rules in regards to appointments, at the very least, here in Congress, we should be informed about it because this affects our LGUs. Most of us here, if not have come from the LGUs, are representing LGUs. And, uh, we are very concerned if their ability to perform their local governments is hampered by new regulations enacted by the Civil Service. I have no problems with ending Endo in terms of government service, provided that the budgetary needs will be provided for in the local government. But unfortunately, madam speaker, we're only allowed up to forty-five percent of our era to spend on our plantilia positions. So if that salary cap will be removed, then maybe we can entertain the possibility of ending Endo in the Civil Service. But without that, we need, uh, legislation to pass in this Congress so that it will be properly be enacted on by the Civil Service. Now, um, I have other concerns, but, uh, I can see that our good sponsor has been standing here for too long. I'll just take it up with the CSC on a personal matter. Thank you, madam speaker. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, the sponsor concurs with your manifestation.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, uh, may I move that we recognize the Honorable Representative Danilo Suarez, our minority leader of the Third District of Quezon, for his interpellation?
The Minority Floor Leader, Honorable Suarez, is recognized.
Thank you, madam speaker. Well, after my colleague Congressman Dattol giving all praises to the Civil Service, how can I question the, this agency? I had just, uh, one concern, distinguished sponsor, Republic Act Sixty-Eight Fifty. It says here that, uh, "Civil service positions appointed under provisional or temporary status who have rendered at least seven years of efficient service may, may be granted, features may be granted, the civil service eligibility that will qualify them for permanent appointment to their present position." Is this being imposed?
Sir, the law, cause it provides, recon, from the effectiveness, seven years?
Yes, no, no, not anymore, distinguished minority leader. Um, the law provides that, uh...
It's only implemented, sir, for the first five years, from the time of enactment, sir. Five years lang kasi effective.
Have a, an effectiveness period of five years? From the effectiveness of the... The pertinent law, let us mention.
Am I being... This somewhat confusing, distinguished sponsor. Uh, it is not, this is the law. Republic Act Sixty-Eight Fifty. Uh, madam speaker, the reason why I'm, I'm raising this issue is this getting to be a problem in, in the local government unit.
Uh, I'm, I'm told, your honor, that the Rasul Law, um...
Has a section which says that...
That it can only be available for five years only. It can only be available of, uh, for five years.
From the time of its effectiveness.
From the time of the effectiveness, and, uh...
Yeah, and, and it has lost, okay?
And, uh, the, the five years has already expired, your honor. Uh, one minute suspension, uh, madam speaker.
One minute suspension. Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you, madam speaker. I, uh, defer first to the distinguished minority leader.
Uh, madam speaker, I've been clarified on my query regarding this particular law. And, uh, I just would like to manifest, uh, that, uh, together with the sponsor, considering that I've seen the pitch, the existing office of the Civil Service, uh, I think it's high time that they be given a decent place, uh, also, uh, considering also that we are in the stage of computer-led program that they must have a, what we call, uh, master data as what other department have now, and accessibility with other government offices for expeditious coordination on queries. As I've said earlier, madam speaker, your honor, the problem about eligibility has been a problem with local government unit. Precisely the reason why almost all of our, most of our mayors have pending ombudsman case because of these, uh, charges and countercharges. Uh, maybe with it, uh, with our proposed measure that we enhance the capability of this office to be more effective in terms of giving, uh, immediate, uh, result to queries being asked by our local government unit, then it will minimize misunderstanding. So that, uh, I understand that there was a a slash in the proposed budget of this department by about, uh... Am I right? Five hundred million, distinguished sponsor?
Yes, uh, your honor, um, and the capital outlay varies, uh, eighty-four point sixteen percent, um, representing four hundred fourteen million six hundred ninety-five. Which is, which is the biggest cut, your honor, because, um, uh, the the biggest, second to the biggest cut because, no, that's the biggest cut that, uh, the, their budget gets slashed with. So, um, uh, the total regular program, the cut is only twenty-six point eleven percent because there were additions to the other items.
Well, in that case, madam speaker, your honor, I think we should, uh, on the part of the minority and the part of majority that we should work hand in hand to make sure that this, uh, slash on their proposed budget be restored, your honor.
Thank you, distinguished minority leader. With your support, I'm sure that, uh, it will, the cuts will be restored. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, uh, on behalf of the minority, interpose no more question on the proposed budget of this agency. I so move, madam speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, Majority Joint
Mr. Speaker, majority joins the minority leader in terminating the, terminating the budget of the Civil Service Commission.
No objection. The chair is none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, we move to suspend until, until two o'clock this afternoon to give way for, for two thirty. In the afternoon, Madam Speaker, to give way for the sponsors, well as the staff to take their lunch.
Session is suspended until two thirty this afternoon. So moved.